Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is the Kent County Board of Commission Board Meeting. Today's date is Thursday, February 11, 2016. The time is 8:30 a.m. Our meeting was preceded today with a work group that looked at the agribusiness work group report that had been completed late last year. So at this point in today's meeting, we will call, or I'm sorry, do the roll call.
Commissioner Wong.
President.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Stack.
Here.
Honstein.
Yes.
Forkes.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Vandermolen.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Callan.
Here.
Blakowski.
Present.
Chivas.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Schroll.
Here.
Chair.
Here. We will next call on Commissioner Stack to lead us in the invocation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As some of you probably know, I have not always agreed with the United States Supreme Court decisions, but I think they fundamentally got it right several years ago when they ruled that it was constitutional for public bodies to begin their meetings with an invocation. Not only is it constitutional, but I think it is prudent and it is reasonable to do so. I also accept that we are a public institution, so we can't put one religious tradition above another. But when you ask me to do the invocation, you'll get a Christian invocation. Shall we pray? Our Heavenly Father, Lord God, Creator, we acknowledge that you are not only love, but you show love. You not only show justice, but you are justice. And so we accept, in the very essence of your creation, you've instilled it with your principles of justice, equity, and fairness. We thank you. These principles of justice have been given to us to guide us in our relationships with each other, with our community, and with our environment. We pray that your justice will prevail as we, as a country, respond to such challenges as international threats, terrorism, nuclear proliferation. We ask that your justice prevail when we respond to such crises as we see in Flint, as we wrestle with issues of tax policy, and what and kind and how to implement safety nets in our communities. We pray that as we come together in this place, and we undertake our decisions and resolutions and deliberations, that whether they be far-reaching or whether they be seemingly insignificant, every step that we take draws our community closer to your perfect justice. We pray this in your name.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will then move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is a special order of business. And today, we have the pleasure of hearing Burgett close from the right place. Always interesting and informative presentation. So welcome this morning, Burgett.
Good morning. And I'm, for those of you old enough to remember Betty Davis, my best Betty Davis imitation this morning. I have a bad cold, so I apologize. Mad cut me some water, so somehow or other, the cold finally got me. But in any case, I always appreciate coming to you. I hope you know that, how delighted I am that we are partners in economic development for West Michigan. It's been a 30-year partnership, and hopefully there'll be another 30 years, not with me up here, but let's hope there is the partnership that continues. So just a little, always like to refresh everybody's memory and our mission, and that is really to promote wealth creation and economic growth and prosperity by legal business retention, expansion, and attraction efforts. That's really enough what we do, to retain businesses, to attract businesses, and to help the ones that we already have expand here. I think everybody knows that we were the first private-public partnership for economic development 30 years ago in Michigan. We continue to be really a model for that model. Eighty percent of our funding, and we have about 250 investors, comes from the private sector. Ten percent comes from the public sector. And you, of course, are our largest public sector investor and have remained so over all these 30 years. And the other 10% comes from foundations. But in the public sector, also, of course, our cities and our townships. And we really appreciate that partnership because without our public sector partners, we wouldn't get a whole lot there. Just, you know, we celebrated our 30th anniversary in October, hard to believe. We started with a study in '84 under the leadership of Jay Van Handel, and in fact, it included one of your own, the former board chair here, Dick Booth. And in '85, we started our work, and we really have never stopped doing that. And we've become really the regional leader. And you talked about regionalism this morning, as most of you know, and I'll talk about that a little bit. We are, you know, now in a region of 13 counties that encompasses everything from Berry all the way up to Luddington. And we have four counties that we work for and with directly. 30 years, $4 billion in capital investment, 40,000 new retained jobs. That's just with the end of '15, and I'm going to tell you what we did in '15. But we don't count it if we don't touch it. So all of these projects that we've done over the years have been obviously done by us with others. And I want to really stress this. It sounds really trite, but economic development is a team sport. So when a company comes to us, whether it's local or whether it's from another country or another state, we pull together the resources. We pull together, whether it's our municipalities, the state of Michigan, Consumers Energy, DTE, attorneys, banks, whatever it may be, we become sort of the fulcrum in the middle to make sure that they get all, all the help that they need. I had an email this morning from France that says, "We want to come there. How can you help me?" So, for instance. Okay. So then I ask back, "What do you need? What do you want to start?" And then we'll start the dialogue with the company. Oftentimes, economic development has become small E, small D, because everything today, people think it's economic development. But our kind of economic development, we believe, is about providing opportunities, creating jobs, building independence, strengthening families. It's about long-term growth. It's about diversity. It's about growing our communities. It's about creating personal wealth and retaining talent. To me, everything starts with a decent job. Otherwise, nothing much happens. So the companies that we work with are wealth creators. In other words, those companies that make something, produce something, grow something, and export it, and money comes back into the community. That's how retail then comes along, okay? So I always talk about, you know, I can't buy cookies if I don't have money to buy cookies, right? Or shoes for that. As I think most of you know, we operate off a strategic plan. The plan is in front of you. It's hard to believe, but this is already the third year of our latest plan, which, I don't know what time runs, but here we are. We started this plan, we developed the plan in 2013. What you see across the bottom in red are really what we consider foundational issues to economic development. First of all, it's business support systems, those things that we do to help a company grow and expand and bring them the resources that they need. Infrastructure, very, very critical, from the airport to the port in Muskegon, to rail, to roads, to bridges, water, sewer, as we saw in, we're seeing in Flint. If you don't have good infrastructure, economic development gets really hampered. So we are in the process of doing a broadband analysis of those 13 counties. Believe it or not, that last mile in a rural community can be the difference between starting a small business in northern Kent County or in Nowago and not. Okay? So very, very important. Work-ready talent. I don't think I'll tell you anything you don't know already. At a 3% unemployment rate, we need to look at different ways to get people who have been unengaged in the workplace, get them re-engaged in the workplace. We have recently worked with Hello West Michigan. We work with Community College on apprentice programs. We're looking, we work with West Michigan Works, but really define the talent that our companies need to fill the openings that they have and figure out solutions. And they have to come from different places today. It's not a one size fits all. And last but not least, quality of life. And I will be very honest with you, about eight, nine, 10 years ago, when you looked at site location factors, the quality of life was a nice thing to have, but everybody talked about it. But today, it has become a driver, particularly for attracting talent. So, and while we don't do that directly, but the expansion of the zoo, the downtown development, the opera, the symphony, whatever we have to offer in that area, we support. And our staff sits on 24 different boards, from Downtown Development Inc. to the Zoo Board, one above, to the Sports Commission, to make sure that those pieces are also going into place. So that's what we consider foundational. Across the top in yellow, you see then where we concentrate our efforts. And really, when you think about it, you can't just grow an industry out of nothing. You have to have something to build it on. So we've always been a manufacturing area, and we continue to be one of the finest manufacturing areas. And it's not your granddad's Oldsmobile factory. These are sophisticated companies that use sophisticated equipment that need sophisticated, sophisticated labor force. You talked about the agribusiness. In those 13 counties, we have 230 businesses that process some kind of agricultural product. So it's a very, very big piece of our strategy. The life sciences, again, you know, you don't need to go very far. You have Medical Mile, but you also have Freebed, Mercy Health, Metro Health. All of that really creates an unbelievable infrastructure, if you will, for healthcare, for life science research, for medical device companies. And we're seeing, obviously, a whole lot of growth there. But we're also seeing there is the attraction of unbelievable talent, which Van Handel Institute is now employs people from 22 different countries. So it's a real talent attractor, but it's also creator of new business. The technology and communication sector, something we added during this cycle of our strategic plan, and it's a really growing industry. I mean, I know a lot of people know OST, which is a very, very successful, not a startup anymore, but there are a whole bunch of small, 25 to 50 employee, high-tech companies doing web development, doing software development, that are in our community and growing. In fact, I'm having one moving into next to us in the Vedyard Building. They're redoing the space, and there's 25 people there. And we really want to support that so that we can grow the tech sector. Last but not least, and this is really more around talent, they pointed this out to us when we did this plan, we have a core competency in West Michigan around design. And it started well over 100 years ago when we had, when we were Furniture City USA. But we still have the world's largest office furniture industry companies here. But even in auto part or whatever you make, it has to start with a design. And so we are collaborating with Design West Michigan, which we started about eight or nine years ago. It's now housed at Kendall. We're collaborating with Kendall to really integrate the whole design community into what it is we do in these other four areas. You know this for me, if you don't count it, you don't do it. So our goals for these three years was 5,500 new jobs, 183 million in new payroll, and 390 million in new capital. And we are, as of the end of 2015, at 3,500 new jobs, 123 million in new payroll, and 484, almost 485 million in new capital. We announced our first project yesterday, another close to $4 million investment, and another 91 jobs. So we are obviously beyond our goals and investment, and we have every intention of getting to the other numbers. And by the way, this does not exclude the switch project. So we're going to count it in 2016. We did 16 projects last year across our area. There was 170 million in new investment, 44 million in new payroll, and over 1,300 new and retained jobs. And I thought it was interesting that we took a map, and you kind of see where the projects are in 13 municipalities. Like I said, 123 million in new payroll. See, 12 little red dots represents a project. You know, I thought I'd show you what lists we made in 2015, because when you see them individually in the newspaper, you kind of like, you kind of forget, oh, there's one and there's another one. But we've been on a number of really, really impressive lists. Number one in real estate market to watch in 2016. Second best place to own a home in America. Top 10 pro-business state by Polina. Let me stop right there. Polina is a site consultant firm out of Chicago, who has always given Michigan really bad ratings. I've worked with a gentleman who owns it. He does a lot of research into how states compete. And we were always on his list. If we made it to 35, we'd be doing really good. So when I saw this last year, I took a step back because I know Ron Polina really well. We've worked with him on many, that he put us into this category in the top 10 states was amazing to me. And it's around the tax reform that we've done, regulatory reform we've done in Michigan. So I was, that one was a real, it blew my mind, actually. Third best in the USA for job creation and economic development by Area Development Magazine. That's one of those magazines that we pay close attention to. Third cities leading the US manufacturing revival by Forbes. Third in leading location reports. We were the third, number one city for family to raise a family by Forbes. Second best city to find a job by Forbes. And the third city for economic growth by the Detroit Free Press. So, I mean, we should be very pleased about, and today, when you start talking about West Michigan and Grand Rapids, you often don't have to explain anymore where we are. We're on people's maps. So speaking of maps, you've seen this before. On the right-hand side is the Midland, obviously. Yes, there is an Upper Peninsula, of course. We are Region Four. Those are 13 counties with the second-largest region in the state in terms of economic development. And this also follows what the Metropolitan Council is doing. For those of you who sit on the Metropolitan Council Board, you are familiar with the Governor's Prosperity Initiative. And that Prosperity Initiative follows those exact same county lines. And so what we did with economic development four years ago, instead of aligning our resources, so when I go market today, we market the resources of all those 13 counties. From the airport in Kent County to the port in Muskegon County, to the companies that we have, there's over 2,200 of them in this area, manufacturing companies. And then what the Metropolitan Council is doing is looking at MDOT that now aligns with us. We have aligned our Michigan Works offices. I used to have five, now I have two. So all of this is beginning to align so that we can present a much more complete and robust picture to a company, because I hate to say it, but they don't really care about boundaries. So, and neither does labor. It flows pretty freely between those three. And if you look on the left-hand side, those four red counties are our core counties, The Right Place's core counties. And of course, Kent has always been our home county, if you will. It's the largest, has the largest number of companies. But we now have contracts with Ionia County. We just signed another one. Maatcom thought that was pretty cool, so why don't we do that too? And then earlier this, at the end of last year, we signed Nowago County to a contract. So we have staff in each one of those counties that just deal with the projects in those counties directly. They raise their own money to pay for that person, but they're really under our umbrella, if you will. And that's been working very, very nicely. Hello West Michigan is an organization that you may or may not have heard of. They were started by a group of local companies about five, six years ago. They were about 65 member companies. And what they really do is when, let's just say, one of our large firms is looking for particular talent, they get the resumes in, they sort through them, and they match up people with those jobs. So, and they also do a lot with what we call trailing spouses. So just to give you an example, Spectrum was hiring a very special physician in a very, very narrow specialty, and her husband is an architect. Well, she likes to take the job, but he would like a job too. So Hello West Michigan is connecting him to all the architectural firms in the area so that she takes that job and we don't lose a very talented group of people. So they joined us early this year, and that's worked out really well because they wanted to be more regional. The next slide really is how do you spend 183 million dollars when you have that kind of payroll? A lot of it goes to retail, it goes to housing, it goes to hotels. But that's how it really resonates through, and by the way, this information is in your packets, that's how really, almost $200 million resonates through the community. And that's really, to us, our ROI. And then investment, and obviously, we almost hit $500 million. But you buy land, you buy buildings, you fix your buildings, you buy machinery and equipment. And so that's how almost $400 million resonates through the community. So I know I ran through this. I know we have a very, very busy schedule. Last but not least, and that's not on here, I always want to thank you for appointing me to the airport board. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve there. I also want to thank you for your foresight. The gentleman, Mr. Hefflin, said it best. The leadership by this board to really understand that the airport is a regional asset is really, truly immense. And we are making a lot of progress. As you know, The Right Place hosts the Regional Airlines, which has become, you know, took up the efforts of the regional, West Michigan Regional Airlines. Bill Payne from Amway is the chair. We started the airport's fundraising campaign. We have our first kickoff meeting on Monday. So all of that is coming just together extremely well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, and thank you for your leadership for the region.
My pleasure. Really.
You know, we, I always view your reports as a bit of a department report, because some counties have their own economic development department. We don't. In our case, that's The Right Place. So thank you for...
That's how we look at it.
Yes. That's how we look at it, too. So I'll open it up for any questions for Burgett. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Burgett. Couple of things. Just, I guess, a question and a couple of comments. As far as we read about the hemorrhaging of businesses here to Mexico, people leave here, is there anything that we can do to keep, or is that just strictly a bottom-line situation where we're always going to lose a few people to Mexico in cheaper manufacturing? Or is there anything else missing that...
I wouldn't call it hemorrhaging. Let me just explain by way of one example why companies are trending there. And it's more than just cheap labor. Part of it is that the automotive industry is growing immensely in Mexico, okay? So you have GM, Ford, Chrysler, Audi, VW, everybody sort of in the middle of Mexico as part of another market, okay? And they then bring their suppliers along. The way the supply chain works today is if you are an auto supplier, let's just pick on the board, right? They used to have 1,000 suppliers globally, and they basically said, "We're going to narrow that down to ex-suppliers." And if you, Antor Automotive Supply, cannot supply me in America, in Mexico, in China, in India, and in Germany, then you are not going to get the North American business. So what it essentially does is actually strengthen it. I know this sounds counterintuitive. If you don't follow them, then you will lose the business that you already have in this country. And that's really what's, that's more what's happening than cheap labor. Some of it is cheap labor, there's no question about it. I mean, we just experienced it. But a lot of companies are being, it's no different than when I located a German company here. They don't close down anything in Germany, but they need to address the North American market for GM, Ford, Chrysler, VW, whoever they're supplying, and come here. So the 46 German firms we have here that are mostly auto suppliers are coming here for the same reason that a US company or a Michigan company goes to Mexico to build a plant. And there is not a darn thing you can do about it.
Right. Can I follow up with one? This one coming. I was glad to hear you mentioned quality of life is bumping up on the scale, and I agree with that. And also, your comments about agribusiness, and the two, I think, are tied in to each other. One of the things that works really well is when we repurpose old properties and do brownfield developments. It's become very popular.
And by the way, we are the, when the brownfield laws were passed under Governor Engler 18 years ago or something, we were the first in the country to have those laws. They are being emulated in other states. And believe it or not, my niece in Germany, who studied brownfield development and got into her aunt's business, Michigan's brownfield law is actually in German literature on brownfield development.
Well, it's a great tool. And what it does is allow us to slow the sprawl, because when we have this fantastic agriculture going on around here, when people look at quality of life, sometimes the quality of life equates to how long does it take to get out of town? And the shorter that distance is, the higher the quality of life goes up, as long as we take care of the existing infrastructure and stuff. So I think it's really important to tie all those things together. And then one other quick thing, you mentioned tax reform and deregulation as being one of the reasons that Polina has now bumped us up. And I think that's very important to understand.
Very.
When you lower taxes and deregulate within reason, it's good for business, generally speaking.
Well, we've seen, and obviously, even on the national, not, if you even take the Polina report out, but the National Tax Foundation now ranks us 12th in the country for, and that makes a big difference. Because the top three site location factors are talent, infrastructure, and incentives. Now, taxes are about number seven, but it still plays a role when you start ticking off the list of where you want to go, so.
Thank you for your...
But to your point, Commissioner, I think we're very fortunate that we have a really terrific urban environment, and within a half an hour, you could be, you know, fly fishing on the Muskegon, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Blakowski?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Burgett, for your awesome work as you continue to move a region forward. My day job, I hang out a lot with public transportation.
Right.
And the country where you grew up has an awesome public transportation system.
Yes, we do. But we also have great freeways where you can go down.
Absolutely. It's a both-and. I'm not, I'm not saying...
No, no, it's this and, no doubt about it.
It's both-and, absolutely. on, you know, like Gentex in Ottawa County, desperate for employees, and the region may have 3% unemployment, but there's parts of our community, parts of my district, that the unemployment rate's near 30%, 40%. And how do we make that connection? There are places in the Rapid Service area on Three Mile Road where people can't effectively use the Rapid to get there, because, good news, yesterday, we got $57 million for the Laker line. But the Laker line is just going to replace what already exists. It's not going to be a nimble system that actually can get people to the jobs they can't get to today. So, I mean, when you look at the movement of talent at that more fine level, is that something that your board looks at at all? Or can you give some pressure on Peter Varga and his crew?
Let's just say that Peter and I are having conversations.
Yeah.
Discussions about that. Somebody has to pay for it. How do I, who pays for the bus line from the high-unemployment area to Gentex, for instance? Okay? It's a half-an-hour drive in a bus. The question is, who pays for it? It boils down to money. That's simple. I've had the conversation. Okay? Because between Ottawa and our county. So it depends on, do the companies want to band together and buy a bus, hire a bus driver, and put 50 or 60 people on a bus, and bring them back at 5:00? Or is it really the Rapid that doesn't really work in, that doesn't- Work in Ottawa County, how do we mesh them together?
Well, they do work in Ottawa County.
It goes beyond my work.
The Laker line actually goes into Ottawa County-
I know, I know.
-two million trips a year.
But straight west, not to Gentex, not to Z. So there are discussions going on, but somebody has to figure out how to pay for it.
I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Vice Chair Schroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bergen, as always, appreciate you being here this morning. I had the pleasure of hearing much of your presentation at your Investor Breakfast last week, which was a great turnout. Appreciate it being there.
Thanks.
I was just wondering about your strategic planning for the next three years. It sounds like you're beginning that right now. And I'm wondering, can you kind of give us a little bit of a tease, what we should be thinking about, and what you're going to be talking about for those next three years? And sort of as a follow-up to that, looking at the regional collaboration and the other counties that are in our MEDC region, are there plans or discussions about contracting with some of the other counties that are in that region? Will that be part of the conversation as well?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Since we're in the third year of our strategic plan, we have retained Pricewaterhouse again. Had our first meeting with our key staff to look at what has worked and what hasn't worked in the plan that we have. And the reason we went from a five-year plan to a three-year plan is because five years just is too long in this fast-moving business environment. So we're going to look at, are these still the right things to focus on? What has worked, what hasn't worked? So that's really where we are. They're going to work with our board, which of course, Darryl is a member, so he'll get involved there. I can't really give you a teaser on where this is going, because I don't want to have a preconceived notion of what is going on. Part of this plan always is, and part of our job, is not just the tactical of delivering, you know, another project, you know, a $15 million investment or whatever it is, but to really look long-term on the horizon and see what is happening in the world, what's driving economic growth in parts of, and prosperity in parts of the region, the state, and really globally. What are influences that are making, that we need to pay attention to? But I don't want to, I have no preconceived notions at this point where this is going. I don't think it'll change as dramatically as the last one did, because we really did a total redo. And I'm sorry, your second part was-
My second question was just talking a little bit more about the regional collaboration, because-
Oh, that's, I think that when the governor did the, sort of gently pushed us into this direction, you're asking about other counties. You know Rick Chapler really well. We were asked by the Frye Foundation about a year and a half ago to work with Lake County. I know Commissioner Vander Mollen is up there quite often. But we got some help from the Frye Foundation, because rural economic development is part of their strategic priority, is part of their strategic priorities. And Rick has worked with Lake County to craft, help them craft a strategic plan for economic development. They've just founded their first-ever Lake County Economic Development Corporation, a 501(c)(3). They're starting to collect, I mean, get some money together to do economic development. In a rural county like this, it's obviously different than an urbanized county. And we're having discussions with others, but the collaboration of the ones that are not in red there, where we don't have a contract, has become stronger as we go along. Remember that when we go out and market, we had a big trade show this week in California for medical devices. We really represent the whole region at the same time. But collaborative-wise, we do a lot together, even if we don't have a contractual arrangement. And the work that the Metro Council is doing with, you know, setting other priorities dovetails very nicely into what we are doing. So I'm quite pleased how this is working. We are one of probably two regions in the state, and the Lieutenant Governor mentioned it at our Investor Breakfast a week ago, that are really working well together.
Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Chair. Bergen, it was about 30 years ago. I think you used that-
I was 15, you were 18, so.
When you came to the city of Wyoming, I think you used that same phrase, something about, Harold, you've got to have people here if you're going to sell cookies. And it worked. I remember then Wyoming had joined it about 30 years ago.
And they have, they continue to be a great part of it.
But I want to touch a little bit of what Commissioner Antor brought up about the issue of quality of life. We have so much, so much to be thankful for in our region. And it's by plan and by work, as we think of the zoo, our museum, our sports commission, all the cultural things that has raised our occupancy, and our hotels, and has meant great things for the airport. And the airport's a big part in bringing that people in. And the importance, I just thank you for putting that as one of those basic four, is that, as I like to tell people, I think with Switch coming to town, didn't President Roy say something about he liked the quality of life here? Well, there's what he chose-
He did. He came during Art Prize the first time.
Oh, yeah. And so I just, thank you, that the quality of life has a financial impact and job creation and all those good things. Thanks for bringing that to the-
You're welcome. And it's very interesting, because I would say 10 years ago, when we would deal with the company, and you know, you've got a job offer, and you get transferred, you really didn't get asked, we're, you know, we're transferring you, do a good job, be happy there, right? But today, people really do pay attention to the quality of life. Were there one to spend their time after 5:00 or 6:00 in the evening, what do we have to offer? And whenever we bring people in, whether they are new companies, that will eventually bring in someone from overseas, or whether we bring in a talented person through Hello West Michigan, I have to say, and it sounds very trite, and it's one of those phrases, but we do punch way above our weight for a community or a region our size. Because you really do have a mix of terrific urban quality of life. And if you want to go fly fishing, you don't have to drive for hours to get there. I had a young man on our, as an intern from Grand Valley, not too long ago, who said, you know, I live downtown, but I can, he literally bicycles to Norwego County, and I can be in my tent, you know, someplace, and I think I'm miles and hundreds of miles away. So, and it really does make a big difference. We had a firm in last week, and they were completely amazed by what we have to offer. So in addition to, obviously, you've got to have the land, and the buildings, and the people. But the impression that we have today for our community has changed dramatically over the last 20 years, dramatically.
Commissioner Podstine?
Thank you, Chair. So, it's your lucky year. I have no questions.
That's disappointing. Why do you always get ready for your questions?
I'll just start where you ended off by thanking us. I wanted to thank you and your staff. I know anytime I've ever had a question and called The Right Place, I get prompt messages back, and I really appreciate the information. I've always enjoyed your reports, not even now, but back when I was a city commissioner, and I was glad to say that Grandville was a partner with The Right Place, too. So if you could just thank your staff for the wonderful work they do day-to-day. And it's, you know, it shows in your numbers, and it's appreciated by not just businesses, but the people at home.
I really appreciate that, because I stand here representing, obviously, a tremendous staff. I don't do this by myself. So I appreciate that, Commissioner.
Commissioner La.
Damn, I was ready for a question.
Thank you, Chair. We all heard about the Switch-
Yes.
-transfer here. You didn't, you said that wasn't included in your figures here.
Not yet. You know, I-
Well, I guess I just want to have you go through a little bit of the story of how that landed. It seemed like that happened pretty quickly. That wasn't on the radar. And they came here, I guess, by the invitation of a Realtor or something. But so what's, is that a good thing? I mean, it must be. It sounds like it's good.
Well, I-
Will it generate the jobs we talked about?
Switch Supernap is a data storage company. It's 15 years old, with about 100 clients, over 2 million square feet of space in Las Vegas. I was there two weeks ago today, visiting them, because I wanted to see it. And they're building another 6.5 million square feet in Reno, Nevada. And if you really think about what we did this morning on here, you know, that handheld you have, your iPad you have, you know, everything is running over the cloud. It's not some, you know, esoteric thing out there. They are the cloud. So, for instance, they process about a million transactions for eBay a day. So their customers include eBay and the MGM, all of the MGM casinos, Intel, Sony Gaming, you name it. So when your grandson plays some game, it's highly likely that that runs over a server in Las Vegas, Nevada. Okay?
So now they can get it in, now they can get it to West Michigan?
And, yes. And the reason they looked east is for a number of reasons. One, their customers want redundancy east of the Mississippi. And to be quite honest, we were not on their radar screen. And we were not on their radar screen because we charge on their equipment a sales and a use tax. Okay? We don't charge sales and use taxes on manufacturing processing equipment. So if a company in Michigan buys a new machine to blow mold, you know, plastic, you don't pay a sales and use tax on that piece of equipment. And the argument that would, so the other thing you need to understand is, Switch, the sales and use tax elimination was not done for Switch. It was done for their customers. So if this were a data center for Switch, okay, each one of your chairs would represent a customer, right? So, and that customer could be eBay, it could be Disney, it could be Shutterfly. And every two to three years, you replace that chair at a cost of $30 to $50 million, because that stuff burns out heat, et cetera, et cetera, and it becomes outdated. So if you want to attract the Disneys, the Ebays, et cetera, to a data center, and every three years they have to pay 6% sales and use tax on that new piece of equipment, they're not coming. And there were 17 other states that had already decided that they wanted data centers like Switch in their states, because of what they bring to the party, if you will. It's a new industry, okay? And so when the company was looking east, they looked at New York, Pennsylvania, and Ohio. It so happens that someone said to the owner of Supernap, of Switch, but I have this really interesting building in Michigan. We're not going to Michigan. They're not on our radar screen because of these things. And then the same gentleman who owns the company showed him a picture of the pyramid. He became interested. Tom DeBoer was the Realtor for the, called me in on the deal, and the rest, SSAs, history. So that's the short version of, now, we're still working with the company, obviously, in Gaines Township to make things happen there. It's, but it is, and it's a new industry. There are obviously other companies smaller than Switch that are already doing, that already have data centers here. And so the law, the laws, the tax laws we changed apply to all of them. But this is really sort of the biggie and actually in the world, you know.
Commissioner Sten.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sten.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Good morning, Bergen.
Good morning.
So I wanted to just comment first that when I have out-of-state clients come in, and they look around, and they comment about all this activity going on, and they ask, what's the recipe for what you're doing? Of course, I say it's copyrighted, can't tell you that. But we have a very dynamic economic development engine called The Right Place.
Thank you.
So you're a significant part, I think, of the success of this place. A follow-up question, though, and I asked this in the work session as well. One of the advantages that we have to places like Mexico is our infrastructure. But infrastructure takes a lot of work. And I'm wondering about the freight, the freight rail system. And I know it's very expensive to keep those systems upgraded and operational, and they deteriorate. What is the state of our freight rail system in West Michigan?
Well, I wish my colleague and friend and compatriot Rick Chapler was here, since he's my-
That's what I heard last time.
Pardon me. He's home with, he had knee surgery, and then he, anyway. We, and I love the rails-to-trail system, it's wonderful. But we also took a lot of rail out, and now rail is becoming in again. Okay? So the rails we do have, we need to make sure we keep, and we keep it up. A lot of the big ones, like the big national rail companies, are no longer in Michigan, so we have short haulers, as they're called, but they're very, very good, and they're very effective. One of them is what we call Grand Elk. It goes from Grand Rapids to Elkhart, and then connects into the rest of the system. And they're taking very good care of their rail. And they've become, they're less expensive. So some of the short haulers are actually, for us in Michigan, better than the big ones that run, you know, it's like CSX. The bigger issue is, is how do we keep the rails that we have as, you know, so that we have a balanced offering of logistics, if you will, from the port in Muskegon to the airport, to roads, and to rail. Because we are, remember, you've got a border here, right? I mean, we are a peninsula, and so logistics becomes a real key issue to get goods and services, goods and people in and out. And rail has to be part of it. There's a big, I don't know if that was in your report, but one of the big pinch points for rails right now is Chicago. So if you're bringing goods out of the Long Beach, out of Long Beach or California, wherever, by rail, it used to be that your offload time in Chicago was two to four days. It's now five to seven. So, five to seven. So there sits your stuff, right? So we're looking at, how do we, can you get it back over, how do we get this offloaded and then get in here? Is it on rail, is it on truck, et cetera? But, you know, I'm not sure that I fully answered your question, but we do have to keep our rail system going. No doubt about it. The more logistics capability we have, the better Michigan is because of our geographic location.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a comment, Bergen. I want to thank you again for lending your time and talent to the airport board.
My pleasure.
She is the liaison to the business community. A few years ago, in our strategic plan, we were trying to figure out how we could continue the West Michigan Air Alliance that Dick DeVos had started. And we came up with a Regional Air Alliance, and Bergen agreed to take it under her umbrella, and it's just been going guns ever since. So I just want to thank you for, I know you're busy, but I do appreciate you-
Oh, no, it fits perfectly well. I mean, it fits into our whole regional, and as I said and have said many times, the airport is a key asset for economic development. It's an economic development driver in and of itself. And it's getting better all the time. I mean, it's just a great airport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see any other questions. Oh, we do have one more. Commissioner Shipp.
Thank you. Good morning, Bergen. I have two questions, and they're not really related. But the first is, you made reference to all the Forbes lists, and Grand Rapids also made a Forbes list. They surveyed 52 cities for African-Americans to live in, and Grand Rapids came out 51st out of 52nd. I know that this is a priority for Mayor Bliss, because she did address it last night at the neighborhood meeting, and last week. How is this affecting the work that The Right Place is doing? Are you guys looking to address this issue as well?
Absolutely, and we're working with the mayor. So we've had conversations about that. Because as Commissioner Bukowski pointed out, we have a 3% overall unemployment rate in it. We have pockets of folks that are, where the unemployment is 15 and 20%. And we are internally and with other partners wrestling with that question. How do we get those that are not participating in this prosperity engaged? So absolutely, absolutely. And in fact, it came in, it was a part of the discussion in our first strategic planning meeting.
Very good to hear. My second question, slightly related. How is the situation in Flint affecting- Flint affecting your work? Is it having any kind of impact because Flint is in the same state as Grand Rapids for how you look to attract businesses?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It, it has, we've had conversations with, because when, when you are, a lot of new companies come to us, as I think I've explained this before, through third parties, okay, called site consultants. And so you, you, and they don't make a distinction. It's one state, and, you know, we're, it's, it's been obviously a tragedy that happened there. So you are, you are, you are being lumped into Michigan, right? And so we, we have to start, continue to differentiate ourselves that, that, particularly around ag, because it's related to water, obviously. So, but it, yes, it has. It has put a pall over some of our statewide efforts, which then impact us. When, when we talk to, to folks who are looking at, at Michigan for a potential location. It's unfortunate, but true.
Any other questions? Okay, I see none. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very much. Great questions.
I think it took a lot of time, but if, if you are a department of ours, you know, it is time to all spend some of your, what you're up to.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We will then move to item number six, which is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Gerald Miller, seven-three-nine-seven Buccaneer Drive Cascade Township. I'm here representing the Kent Conservation District. I'm one of the five board members on the board, and our directors are elected for four-year terms in an open meeting. Our mission is to help citizens protect and enhance the natural resources of Kent County. And we do that by assisting landowners to implement soil-water conservation practices, as well as assist with planting of native trees, grasses, forbs, and the eradication of invasive species. We partner with USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, to ensure that the federal Farm Bill cost share dollars are available to landowners and operators in Kent County. And we also cooperate with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development in contracts and grants. We are, in the previous special meeting, on page twenty-one, there is a comment about the role of the Kent Conservation District. We conducted our annual meeting on the ninth of December, and we handed out our annual report. I've got copies along for each of you. We were pleased that Commissioner Hennessy was at our annual meeting and represented your commission at our annual meeting. I, what I would like to do, I won't go through that in detail, but just comment on a few items in the annual report on, starting on the front side, on the left side. We do have a chair of district forester with Montcom, Montcom County, and you see the work that that individual has done. We're, I mentioned our strike team, and we have a very active strike team, working both with local landowners, as well as with some of the townships in Kent County, and eradication of invasive species. We are in the final assessment phase on the Flat River Watershed. That's a project funded through EPA three-nineteen, and we're wrapping that up, and we'll have our final report to DEQ later this year. We brought on, we had a lot of turnover with our Michigan Environmental, Michigan Agriculture and Environmental Assurance Program technician, Meep, and we had turnover, and we brought on a new person the first of June, and she's done a great job. And you see the results there of the work that she has done. Currently, in Kent County, we have thirty-seven verifications since that program has been ongoing, about four years, four to five years. We, we do have our native plant and forb, grass and forbs and tree sale, and those are scheduled for this year on April sixteenth. We'll have our spring tree seedling sale, and on May the, May the twenty-first, we'll do our native plant and forb sale. So that, those sales are held at the district office just north of Leonard on the east side of Belt, East, East Beltline. I will move over to the left side, or excuse me, the right side of the annual report on the first page, and just, just summarize some of the cost share programs that USDA provides. And in that program, last year, they brought in about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of cost share money. And if you use the rule of seven, that relates to about one point two-three million dollars. Again, we have some other things on the horizon. One is, and we reported on our annual meeting, we're working with the Michigan Department of Military Affairs to look at a project at the Grand Rapids Veterans Home, to look at some stream restoration on Lamerton Creek. On the backside is our budget, both last year's budget and this year's budget. And I won't go into those, but it's there for your information. I would just, I would just would refer or reiterate that even though we're a special unit of state government, we receive no appropriated funds from county, state, or federal budgets. All of our finances are derived from contracts, grants, fees for services, which is our, and as well as our plant sales, donations, and sponsorships. We, the list of our board members is in the lower right, or lower left, excuse me, and you'll notice that we have a vacancy. Actually, we have two vacancies. Mr. Camel left Michigan, moved Arizona at the end of December, and so we have two vacancies. We're obviously looking for an individual, or individuals to serve on our board that have agriculture affiliation and a strong agriculture background. So if you know of candidates that may be interested, let us know, and we would be, love to contact them and see if they'd be interested in being appointed to our board. In summary, Kent Conservation District is your, and by that I mean your, your commission. We're an asset for addressing soil, water, and natural resources here in Kent County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for your participation in agribusiness.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this morning?
Morning. My name's Peter Darienzo. I'm the new CEO at the John Ball Zoo. I see some familiar faces here, and a lot of new faces as well. I promised to only take a couple minutes of your time. I know you have a full agenda. You know, I can't tell you how pleased and privileged I feel to be here. I heard a lot about quality of life. That was a big decision, a big driver in my decision to bring my wife of more than twenty years and my three kids to the area. That and I have family in east Michigan, but, but don't hold that offense me. And I've learned some things in the month I've been here already. One, we have a phenomenal county park system and trail system, which, which is just, just great. Two, when you're in a group, don't, don't share where in the county you live, because you'll have one person that will say, great choice, and the rest will say, why didn't you choose my area? And then third, you know, make sure when you're in a, in a room full of people, be careful whether you talk about MSU or the University of Michigan. Now, why do I say all these things? It's clear to me that this area is committed to building strong families and strong communities. And, and that's what zoos are all about. Zoos are about building strong families. And, and that's why I feel privileged to be here, and I look forward to, to working with the community and all of you. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to West Michigan. We look forward to your work at the zoo, and I'm sure we'll be hearing reports from you at various times.
Yes, in the spring, I'll be back with a detailed report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments this morning? I see none, so we will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, and I call on Commissioner Steck for objections regarding item seven.
Thank you, Chair. Southfield, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Support.
We have support by Vice Chair. Is there any questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. So we move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, which are resolutions. And for our first one, I call upon Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution Five, the labor agreement of the police officers' Labor Council, captains and lieutenants.
Support.
And support by Vice Chair Schroll. Questions or comments on this motion? I see none, and this is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. We'll move next to most, the next resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move Resolution sixteen-six to accept the fiscal year 2015 State Homeland Security Grant and Budget Amendment for the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
We have support by Commissioner Voorhees. Questions or comments on this resolution? I see none, and it is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Schroll.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion passes. We then move to Item Number Nine on our agenda, which is any additional public comment. This is a shorter period of one minute. Is there any public comment? Okay, I see none. So we then move to Agenda Item Number Ten, which are reports. Is there any commissioners can report on? Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Construction has begun. Out at the airport, there are some detours. Traffic seems to be moving okay. And we're hoping to have a completion date of March of seventeen with the first phase. There you go.
Excellent. Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to talk a little bit about our mental health board and mental health issues. I've, I've been reporting issues with the audit of the Lake Shore Regional Entity, and then the kind of reduction in funds to the Network One-Eighty. And, and we've been thinking, we've kind of turned the corner on it. And actually, at our, at our convention or conference in Kalamazoo of the, of the Mental Health Association Boards, got a little bit better comfort level, I think, from the comments made by the Association Chair, and actually Lieutenant Governor Kelly was there, talking about, you know, the perspective of, of the future funding. And we were, we were aware that the Department and the Governor is sort of looking at other ways of providing mental health services, but seemed to think that that wasn't going to happen real quick. But the Governor really threw us a curve at his budget presentation. And is calling on the Department and calling on changes to be made by the end of 2017 in the way that the managed care is being given. So we're, we're scrambling. I know Matthew and, and Wayman have had continued meetings, and we'll, we'll kind of get on top of that, but just kind of stand, stand with it. The second is, I think I mentioned in the past, that, that our Network One-Eighty Board and staff are looking at the ways that we provide supports coordination services to people with developmental disabilities in our county. We've got roughly two thousand, twenty-two-hundred people, citizens. A lot of those are voting members, I'm sure, or families are voting members. So we've been cautious and, and taking our time developing rationale for that. The staff recommendation is to bring it all in-house. But we're conducting a lot of surveys and focus groups, and I'm just kind of amazed at how engaged people want to be. And so that's going on now. You'll probably hear some of it if you, if you run across some of your constituents. We will be taking our time reviewing that. We have a special board meeting that's going to be held on April four to kind of look at it. And then we have a public hearing in April eleventh. So we're getting, we're getting lots of involvement with doing that. So all in the name of providing better services.
Thank you. Commissioner Mast, for that update. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids Downtown Development Board met yesterday. I wanted to update you on a couple items from that agenda. Some of you may recall that a couple years ago, a project was started to renovate, update both Monument and Veterans Parks downtown. Monument Park was completed last year, I think. We've now begun the process of updating Veterans, Veterans Park and an additional-
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to hear the roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call votes being requested. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Boulter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Schrull.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion passes. We then move to item number nine on our agenda, which is any additional public comments. This is a shorter period of one minute. Is there any public comment? Okay, I see none, so we then move to agenda item number ten, which are reports. Is there any commissioners can report on? Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Construction has begun. Out at the airport, there are some detours. Traffic seems to be moving okay and we're hoping to have a completion date of March of seventeen with the first phase. There you go.
Excellent. Commissioner Mast.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to talk a little bit about our mental health board and mental health issues. I've been reporting issues with the audit of the Lake Shore Regional Entity and the kind of reduction in funds through the Network 180. And, and we've been thinking, we've kind of turned in the corner on it and actually at our, at our convention or conference in Kalamazoo of the, of the Mental Health Association Boards, got a little bit better comfort level, I think, from the comments made by the association chair and actually Lieutenant Governor Kelly was there talking about, you know, the perspective of, of the future funding and we were aware that the department and the governor is sort of looking at other ways of providing mental health services, but seemed to think that that wasn't going to happen real quick. But the governor really threw us a curve at his budget presentation and is calling on the department and calling on changes to be made by the end of 2017 in the way that the managed care is being given. So we're, we're scrambling. I know Matthew and, and Wayman have had continued meetings and we'll, we'll kind of get on top of that, but just kind of stand, stand away. The second is, I think I mentioned in the past, that, that our Network 180 board and staff are looking at the ways that we provide supports coordination services to people with developmental disabilities in our county. We've got roughly two thousand, twenty-two hundred people, citizens. A lot of those are voting members, I'm sure, or families that are voting members. So we've been cautious and, and taking our time developing rationale for that. The staff's recommendation is to bring it all in-house, but we're conducting a lot of surveys and focus groups and I'm just kind of amazed at how engaged people want to be. And so that's going on now. You'll probably hear some of you, if you run across some of your constituents. We will be taking our time reviewing that. We have a special board meeting that's going to be held on April four to kind of look at it and then we have a public hearing in April eleventh, so we're getting, we're getting lots of involvement with doing that, so all in the name of providing better services.
Thank you. Commissioner Mast for that update. Commissioner Tallin.
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids Downtown Development Board met yesterday. I wanted to update you on a couple items from that agenda. Some of you may recall that a couple of years ago, a project was started to renovate, update both Monument and Veterans Parks downtown. Monument Park was completed last year, I think. We've now begun the process of updating Veterans, Veterans Park and an additional, the, the next step of engineering work was, has, is about to be begun on that. We authorized the CEO, the director, to sign a contract for, and negotiate a contract for the Coller Plaza work that is happening and I'll just remind you that there's a fairly large advisory committee set up to help choose that vendor. As of yesterday, there was a little bit of work yet they wanted to do to select the final vendor and everybody's pretty excited about that process. Some of you may be interested that the Saint Cecilia Music Center is embarking on a two million dollar project to renovate that facility and the DDA helped contribute to some of that work, particularly as it addresses accessibility issues. We have funds that are targeted for that. DGRI also, which the DDA is part of, has adopted some performance measures, which I was really excited about because they're very much outcome oriented. They're measuring what's happening, what the outcomes are in downtown. So pretty, at some point, you'll see those things updated regularly on a dashboard on the DGRI website and I want you to be aware of that. And finally, just want to make sure, this is always an awkward thing for me, that DGRI and the DDA are, are really actively working at the state level on the potential changes to the TIF legislation. And it's always awkward because the county is also doing that and they really continue to want to advocate that we continue to have conversations with the DDA, with the DDA board members, with DGRI about what our various interests are so that we can at least have somewhat of a united front in, in contacting our legislators about what's good in that legislation, what, what's good that's happening in our community and what potential things might make it better. So I just want you to continue thinking about that and recognizing that there's some competing interests going on there and I always have the opinion that the more we can work together, the better off this entire community will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Following up on Commissioner Mast's report, on Tuesday, the Lake Shore Regional Entities Executive Committee met and we talked about a number of things, including what we need to be prepared for in, in this statewide conversation about how behavioral health services are going to be managed through the state. On Wednesday, we got the governor's budget report, which as, as was reported, has, has created a fair amount of anxiety and will now generate an awful lot of conversation. At the same time, at the executive committee, we, we learned that our CEO was on, I don't know if any of you saw the, the video of the cruise ship from New York that was caught in the storm, our CEO was on that ship. He's, he's okay, but it's a good metaphor for what we're about to go into. In, in that world, so he's going to get off that ship and come home and, and he'll be seasick, I think.
Okay. Our administrator has a report.
Just as a follow-up to Commissioner Tallin's comments, I have met with Chris Larson on a number of occasions to discuss the commonalities that exist between the county's agenda, if you will, and, and DGRI. And in fact, this evening, Chris and I are meeting with some legislators to discuss those, those common issues that we are, so we are working on.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, then we will move to agenda item eleven, which is miscellaneous. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I am so sorry I missed the meeting this morning regarding the agriculture or agribusiness report that you spent so much time on. It's very important to me and I spent the night in an animal hospital with my dog and it was a very long, long night, so. But one thing I wanted to just reiterate on that is if you look at the recent epic report on the top ten cities in America about our size as far as the quality of life, nine of the ten, and I've mentioned this before, have active ag preservation programs. So there's no, you know, that's not an accident that, that happens. They also are thriving businesses, but that's a component, so that's very important to keep in mind as we move forward.
Okay. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I'll be attending the legislative conference in Washington DC. I'm glad to hear that two other commissioners are joining me. Part of my role on AECO is I sit on one of their steering committees, the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Subcommittee. Most of our time over the past few years has basically been the waters of the US and energy policy. I've been invited to the Department of Energy with twenty-five other members to meet the director and the staff at the Department of Energy. If there's any of your constituents that have any questions or concerns about energy policy in the US, you can forward it to me and I'll pass those concerns on. I know I've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and they're going to be sending me stuff too. I don't know if I really enjoy going to Washington DC in such a toxic environment where Dems and Republicans and no one seems to be able to work. The only thing they're good at is spending money, which will lead me into kind of something that's kind of on a tangent. Over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be hosting a couple fundraising events. Candace Chivas, someone if you'd look on the board is probably the complete opposite of me. We are working on two events to raise some money for the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation with the earmark of those funds to go to the music programs in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Just want to acknowledge your help and your willingness to work with someone across the aisle. There are things that we can agree on and that we can work together to make this community better, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein, and for your service on the committee. Commissioner Hennessy.
This Saturday, over at the West Side Complex exit, we'll be holding its annual walk for warmth and this is done with the simply school elementary students, their warmth force. They get out and the children, the students mark at this program, they recruit individual donations, they recruit businesses to be sponsors, and then they walk on that cold Saturday morning with their parents and their teachers. It's a wonderful annual opportunity for this service from the school and its students. And so I encourage everybody to come down there around eight-thirty in the morning. I know I will be there. And then the other, the other thing is, I have a letter in the back. We tend not to do resolutions. We tend to do, you know, individual support for bills, especially when they're not necessarily related to our fiscal readiness for, for action. But I have a letter back there to support a House bill, Senate bill called the Large Scale Commercial Dog Breeder Act. This was brought to my attention by one of the residents in my district and this legislation would require large-scale dog breeders to register with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development and follow existing standards of care in place for pet stores and shelters. So it would ensure the humane treatment of animals and it defines facilities as those with more than fifteen intact females. So we're talking large breeding, or, you know, large breeders and, and making sure that we don't have happen here what has, you know, the tragedies, the cruelty, the neglect that is seen in some of the other counties, including Elgin and Mesaki Counties. So the letter is back there for individual commissioner's support of signing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other miscellaneous this morning? I just have one item. The Officers Compensation Commission is meeting February Tuesday, February sixteenth, next Tuesday. If you recall, this is the committee that meets every other year and usually has two or three meetings where they set, or make recommendations, I should say, the compensation for county elected officials. The board has been slotted at time at four thirty-five PM if any commissioner wants to speak to the committee, to the commission, I should say. I do plan to attend, just so you know, I'm not planning to make any kind of specific recommendation, but I do feel, having once chaired this commission, that it's important that we have at least one person there to answer questions and let the commission know what the work of the, of this board is and the time that's put in and so forth. Those are often the questions that come up. So if anybody has any questions on that as well, let me know, but, but it's obviously open to any of you that want to attend as well. So with that, I will move to agenda item number twelve and call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair Thursday, February twenty-five fifteen at eight thirty AM.
Support. Support, all favor indicate with a Saint I.
Yes.
And opposed, motion passed, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.